Hi, this is Mary Greendale and we're doing another issue of Just Thinking. Today, we're going to be talking about the town meeting warrant. Now, if you didn't know, and you haven't kept pace, and who could during this whole COVID thing, town meeting is slated to be held December 5th at 1:00. That's a Saturday at 1:00 and it's down at the Adams School. Now, we are getting ready. The town has its warrant ready. The town meeting may not happen. So, we're all going to have to stay tuned because COVID continues to move and we're not sure what we're going to be doing. So, at any rate, I've got the two people who should be able to fill in all the blanks about what's going on for that night. I have first the chairman of the board of the select board. Someday, I'll get used to not saying Board of Selectmen. The select board, John Cronin, good morning, John.
Good morning, Mary.
And Travis Ahern, our town administrator. Good morning, Travis.
Good morning.
And Travis, thank you so much. The warrant is really nice and clear and succinct. I like it. I like it. Of course, there are only about three other people in town who will ever say they like a warrant, but anyway. Okay. So, um, the first thing I'd like to do, because these have been so absolutely unusual, horrible, whatever times, and I know everybody's spent extra time on all of the COVID and emergency response. I'd like to hear from you, John, about where are we? Not just as relates to COVID, but you know, I feel like there's almost, I know there's a lot happening, but COVID has just been so front and center. How are we as a town? How are we positioned or things okay while we've all been busy otherwise?
Well, thank you, Mary, for the question. I think it speaks to sort of a picture that the select board will make more clear at town meeting when we perform our presentation. Overall, the town is in financially very, very sound shape. I think once we complete our work on December 5th, you will see funds being restored to certain stabilization capital expenditure funds. And at the same time, you'll see a sufficient number of dollars being spent on our infrastructure, our planned infrastructure and equipment and other capital items that are so necessary to keep the town going. From a policy perspective, the town is thriving. We have tremendous interest right now, as you probably know, in new business opportunities. Those opportunities come with challenges and some issues that have to be worked out. With regard to quality of life, I think Holliston residents continue to enjoy a high quality of life in our town. We certainly see some improvements now with the rail trail. We just almost completed the project behind Casey's Crossing, where folks using the rail trail can now park and access it more safely. There is a fair amount of work being done currently to hopefully improve the quality of life of several residents who live on affected streets currently used by commercial vehicles. We'll be talking about that a little while when we get into the warrant. But overall, the board has been tackling a number of different issues that are associated with traffic as well as matters involving quality of life. Operationally, I think things are doing quite well. Our new town administrator has settled in. He feels like he's been here 10 years, probably feels like he's been here 10 years, but he's only been here about four months. His impact has been immediate and quite the impression. Things at town hall are moving smoothly. Work products are exceptional. Our financial relationships with other boards and committees has never been better. Overall, I think speaking for the board, we're quite happy. We see a lot of opportunities ahead to improve the town Holliston's quality of life and overall our financial position. So, we're looking great. One thing I just wanted to point out as a footnote, Mary, in the opening remarks, I think I heard you say the town meeting will be held December 5th at the Adams School. It'll be held at the high school this year.
High school, high school, okay. I'm not going to waste time going back to that. The selectmen need to explain at some point how come it's okay to be at the high school this time, but well, maybe we better. So, why is it okay to be at the high school this time?
So, we had actually an extended conversation about that last night. But over the last several months, we've engaged our emergency manager, Chief Mike Cassidy, as well as through him, officials at the high school, school administration, to figure out the most safe and efficient way to hold a public town meeting. We explored all the options available to us. And one of the things that came up was the need to hold a safe town meeting in an environment that could be turned over safely to the prior users. Because we had to move the meeting into December, outdoor meetings were determined to be too risky. Mike explained last night some misgivings he had with some of the lessons learned from the high school graduation, which was done, I think, during the summertime. There are some significant challenges with an outdoor meeting that we felt it was not worth pursuing. So, last evening, we went into some of the other options that included some of the other schools and environments. One of the school committee members asked about the school fieldhouse. Mike said that the auditorium presented a great opportunity to hold approximately 142 people for capacity with proper social distancing. Our board felt that with the upscaled cleaning and opportunity to turn the property around back to the schools on a Sunday where they can clean it after town meeting participants leave, presented the safest and best option for us to hold our meeting. We're not alone. I think you mentioned last night that there are other communities using indoor facilities. There's a blend of each, but we felt compelled at this point to move in the direction that the high school auditorium is the best solution.
All right, well, why don't we give it a, let's start with this wonderful document. And I'm going to let, the first one is budget adjustments. And I don't think we need to go through what those adjustments are, but why they are there, either one of you.
I'll turn that over to Travis. Sure, so if you don't mind, I'll sort of focus on articles one through four as a package. I would say that these are really the town doing the business necessary to set the tax rate effectively. And so, as you mentioned, Article 1 is budget adjustments. I'd say 75% of what we're looking at here is us planning ahead for the second half of this fiscal year, understanding that there are some unknowns as related to how COVID plays out and also how funding that's been coming through the federal and state government, specifically the CARES Act will play out. That funding that we've received of the $1.3 million is currently designed to expire at the end of this calendar year, leaving us half of the fiscal year through June with the questions that we need to sort of answer for ourselves. Now, it's possible that a second round of CARES Act funding will give us clarity, but I don't think we'll have that clarity before this special town meeting. So, a number of things that we're trying to address in FY '21 budget adjustment is understanding that we need to be prepared for sort of the unknown. So, the biggest chunk of that would be related to unemployment. One thing that we've seen, and this is not specific to Holliston, it's something across the country, quite frankly, is unemployment fraud. It's being addressed at the federal and state level and it's just unclear to us when that would be addressed. So, we're paying bills on unemployment that are higher than we had budgeted. We'd like to plan ahead for that in the event that that is not fixed at the federal or state levels by the time we get to the end of this fiscal year. Additionally, we have some other costs that are not necessarily COVID related, but that we can plan for now when it comes to legal costs. Litigation is something that we're, is on our radar at the moment. So, again, about 75% of that Article 1 budget adjustment is related to us planning to get through this difficult fiscal year. And then, as I said, Article 3, Article 2 is then directly related to implementing some of Article 1, which is the personnel bylaw. Article 3 and 4, the stabilization and capital expenditure fund is putting money into those funds. And again, because it will affect the tax rate, those will impact our ability to set the tax rate. And that is currently planned through the assessor's office to open the hearing the Monday before the town meeting, which would be November 30th. Keep the hearing open through the next Monday, which would get us through town meeting onto December 7th. And then, the finance staff, in addition to the principal assessor, Kathy Pierce, Mary Buskett, and our accountant Sharon Emmerich, we would then be able to get the tax rate set in time by the end of the calendar year, which is our current goal. We do have some backup plans. Obviously, these things can go awry and it is a tight schedule, but we're trying to avoid having preliminary Q3 tax bills. So, right now, it's a tight schedule, but we think we can do it.
Okay, there are a couple of things in this one. As far as the hearing, as a member of the board of assessors, I'm just going to plug in that when the tax rate hearing opens on November 30th, we will be making available appointments for people to do Zoom meetings into our office for any questions that they have about their own issues or otherwise, or how everything is going, whatever they have anyway. So, that's one thing that'll be upcoming and we'll provide details to the select board so that we can make sure that that gets into your regular meeting and advertised appropriately. The other thing is just because you use the word overlay in here, and I know that, you know, sometimes folks don't understand the overlay is just some money that the assessors set aside in case of litigation that goes before the appellate tax board. But because we didn't have any cases or had too much money set aside, we just turn it back to the town. So, that's where the overlay money comes from.
Okay. Could I just add one more thing? Just as a whole, through Article 1 through 4, there's a few key elements here. One, obviously, as I said, is addressing our concerns to help us get through the fiscal year and address the unknown. But it also, those four articles address sort of some assumptions that were put in place when the budget was set in July at our annual town meeting, now that state aid has come in. And so, between that time where the tax levy was assumed to be at the limit, we're now projecting unused levy capacity of about $500,000. So, that will obviously benefit the taxpayer in addition to the planned decline of excluded debt as related to the elementary school. That should, that should help our residents in the Q3 and Q4 tax bills this year. So, we think Articles 1 through 4 addresses everything that we need to in the budget this year, but also understands, you know, that this is a difficult time and tries to address that by increasing the unused levy capacity projected.
If I could add one, Mary, if I could add one item to the list I've just mentioned. Another item within Article 1 will sustain certain contractual obligations that we've incurred through the CARES Act funding that is expected to expire at the end of December. Some of these positions and some of these roles are still needed past December 31st. Article 1 will fund those contracted obligations that include a technology support person, planning board support person, building inspection, board of health and council on aging work. These part-time contractual obligations will sunset at the end of the fiscal year. We were plugging with town resources these obligations so that they can continue their operations beyond the end of the calendar year. In the event that the federal government re-ups any surplus funds or stimulus funds, I should say, and we get a CARES Act Part 2, those funds will be negated and will revert at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Um, I want to, in talking about all of these as one lump, I want to make sure that we aren't missing anything. So, in the capital expenditure fund, is there anything in there that you want to be, you want to explain? And let's, let's remember that for some people, not all of the jargon is as familiar as it is to you guys. I'm going to back up. I just remembered I had a question I wanted to ask and it went away and now it's come back. And so, the question is, Travis, when you said that the taxpayers were somehow going to benefit from the $500,000 and so forth, what do you mean specifically? Are we going to see a decline in the taxes?
So, the way that the budget was balanced to get the budget set at our July annual town meeting was assuming pretty much to the tax levy, because the assumption was that state aid was going to decline. State aid is coming in flat. And actually, we had Senators Filka and Rep. Dykman in front of the select board sort of explaining that it might be 22 where we have some pains. So, the idea here would be, you know, we will not need to tax to the levy to do some of these adjustments right now through Articles 1 through 4. And so, we can actually plan to have a lower levy than we had assumed in the July town meeting. That does not mean that the tax rate will go down for some, but it is, it is a, it is more advantageous for the taxpayer than the assumption that we had in July. The tax, the other benefit that a taxpayer will feel is what we knew was coming, which is the decline in the excluded debt service related to the elementary school, which came off the books in FY '21. And we have another, you know, we have that coming as well in '22 and '23 with the town hall project coming off of the debt roll, as well as the high school, middle school coming off in '23. Is that, is that more clear?
Yeah, I think, I think that helps. Okay. So, um, let's look to Article number 5, the capital budget. And I think that some of this is self-explanatory, but there are a couple of places in which I think people might be curious. The town hall septic system, this $150,000, does this get us a new system? Or is this just one step in the process? I'd like, I'd like you to explain exactly where we are with that.
I'll try it first, okay? So, yes, it gets us a new system. Over the last several months, several folks representing a septic committee, including Paul Sonier, Herb Brockett, and our facility manager, James Keyes, have assessed various options to allow the town to have, the town hall to have a new septic system. As you probably know, the system we have is very old. It's made of cisterns and they have failed. They actually failed some time ago and we have been pumping regularly. We closed down opportunities in upper town hall pre-COVID to give the system relief. The options that were examined included a plot of land near the congregational church that abuts the access road to the left of town hall. Through some discussions with the congregational church, it doesn't appear as though we'll have a clear path towards securing an easement at this time. So, we evaluated a couple of other areas, including up behind town hall, on Jarstee Hill. The town owns a fair amount of land and it has been examined, would perk, but we have to, we would have to theoretically pump the septic product up a hill of a fairly long distance. It's a system that is well established in the, in the world of septic management, but yet it does involve pumps and possible annual maintenance costs. Though, the last option included examining leaching fields at the front of town hall. Essentially, if you're looking at town hall, there are two areas that are covered in grass. There are two small dogwood trees there. We've examined those areas and we think that they are suitable for a leaching field. What this, what this projected cost does is it covers us for any of those options, because we still have some testing to do, which will include more perk testing and underground testing. In the event we examine the front of town hall, we want to make sure that we're not disturbing any previous burial issues that I know have come up in the past. But overall, we feel confident that we have a solution that would cost up to $150,000, but likely less than that. So, we will have a new septic system at the conclusion of this process, but we're, we're still in need of a couple of more things to do once we secure funding for this project.
I know that this project has been in the works for, back when Mark Aronian was on the board. So, it's been a couple of years to get us to the point where we have all the information we need to actually take action. But prior to that, I also know that this discussion has hung, well, Travis just said that the bond runs out next year and on the town hall. So, it's been almost 20 years since any discussion has taken place about the septic system. So, it's an example of one of those places where we, as a community, have not addressed some infrastructure issues that existed. And then, you know, somewhere along the line, something happens and things break. And I just point that out, not as criticism of anybody, because, you know, we all respond to the fire that's in front of us and that's what has to happen. But it does take planning and it does take some long-range thinking about what those exposures are. And this is one that's been hanging fire.
Well, Mary, this is a bit beyond what we talked about just a moment ago with respect to the $150,000, but our board did evaluate a long-term plan in the event that it's ever needed. Currently, as you probably know, the middle school has a treatment plant that was built back in, I don't know, 20 years ago when the facilities down there were renovated. The treatment plant is underutilized and we did talk about trying to put a pipe in from town hall down to the middle school to push sewage and make use of that treatment plant, which the town owns and operates. Unfortunately, the cost to do that is in the high six-figure, low seven-figure range. It's, it's still a kind of an interesting idea to try to figure out creative long-term plans for the facility down there to maximize or optimize its use. But at this point, we feel as though we have a solution within reach that allows us with more reasonable costs to secure a septic system for the next 25-plus years.
Great, I think, I think it's worth looking at, because that treatment facility is there and it may just be that there are other ways in which it can be utilized. So, I think that's worth looking at. Just quickly, library interior improvements, Travis?
Sure, so we actually have two interior building improvements, the library and the COA. And these have come up in the past. And so, what we have now is fresh eyes on it through the facilities manager position. James Keyes has been with us for about seven, eight months now. And so, he has taken a look at this, brought it back to life. This is the opportune time to be doing interior improvements to those buildings, while we have obviously a much more limited foot traffic in both of those buildings. Both of them would, would be a lot of, a lot to do with carpeting, ripping out old carpeting and putting it in carpeting systems that are much easier to maintain over time so that we're not doing large interior improvements every, you know, 20 years or so. They can be sort of maintained, it's a carpet tile system that can be replaced. Some significant painting projects in both of those buildings. And then, in the COA's case, there is also ceiling tiles that need to be replaced. So, we think that this is the opportune time during COVID to be getting those, those projects done. And we think that obviously having, having the facilities manager on board now will help us get them done.
James is really getting us to click off some of those honeydew lists, you know? One, two, three, that's great.
Last night, he introduced a, an option to the board to consider a new supply, electrical supply option that will save the town nearly $75,000 a year. He's reviewed, how many, how many metered, puts whether it was dozens of electrical bills across the town and after analyzing them, presented us some options. And we chose an option that provides us 100% renewable electrical supply for the next year at a considerable savings. And I think his boss turned around, said, "Okay, now you're on to natural gas." So, making his way through all the different facility cost centers. And there are some savings out there. He's doing a great job.
Well, and it also points to the fact that sometimes it takes the outside professional, that is, the person who's not locked into an elected position or a volunteer position. You know, you can't always have volunteers doing this work. And it's great that he can go out and just persist and hammer away at it. I happened to be watching last night or listening. And so, we're going to get some insulation up at the high school at the fieldhouse, which is one of the coldest places in the world if you've ever worked on Election Day. And then, we've also got the Chromebooks, which I heard some question about, but was eventually answered that the Chromebooks follow the students. And so, it does become something of a recurring expense. So, is there any?
One thing I would add to the high school fieldhouse insulation here, the $90,000 cost is what appears in the article, but not shown is the $50,000 that we're receiving from the Green Communities grant. So, the total cost is about $140,000. The cost to us is the $90,000.
Yeah, that's another thing that's been a lot better is just people getting grants. This has been significant. All right, so the Community Preservation Committee report, obviously, this isn't under your IJIS, but let's just talk briefly about the things that they want to do, especially those improvements or repairs and so forth at town hall. Travis, I know that you were working on the windows. I saw, I happened to see you, maybe not the windows, but your blinds a couple of weeks ago. So, how are things going with that?
So, this is again where James Keyes has brought a few items that we thought would be ideal through the CPC. And so, he's done a couple of things in that regard. The windows that were being fixed in town hall last week were functional repairs that the board actually approved through the CARES Act funding, because we like increased airflow is something that is very much COVID-related. And we have older windows on the first floor here where people's offices are. So, functional repairs to allow people to open and close the windows with much greater ease. I almost lost a finger one day before the functional repairs were made. So, that, that is obviously a significant improvement. Within the CPC, James Keyes brought to the CPC three articles as related to the town. One is for windows in town hall within the historical confines of the building, sort of making sure that our windows are protected from the elements on the first and second floor of the building. He has gone through the historical commission to make sure that we have a solution that complies, but also begins to insulate the building and protect our windows. That is something that he got approved for $150,000 through CPC. The other issue within town hall that he brought to them is the town hall floors upstairs, the upper town hall, grand hall floors, excuse me, for $100,000. We've reached a couple milestones there. I think they've been sanded down to the point where you cannot continue to sand them down. So, there will be, have to be some replacement elements. So, obviously, there is a historical component there as well. So, he has that project through the CPC presented to them and they approved that request. And then additionally, the library front facade, we had an issue with a piece falling off. It's obviously, it's a beautiful facade of that building that we're interested in maintaining, but we want it to be safe for people walking under it. And so, he also brought that to the CPC. So, from our facilities manager, three requests were approved through the CPC, two at town hall, one at the library. And then, there were two other items that CPC took up, one for recreation drainage, I believe it was Stoddard Park, and then one for an Eagle Scout project, which is under the category of open space.
That's great. Okay. All right, so next one would be highway or roadway sidewalks and drainage for Mudville area, the streets that are in Mudville, some of the streets that are in Mudville. Now, these were the streets that we did water installations on not too long ago. I'm assuming this is kind of like the rest of the project, so to speak. So, I'm going to ask you two questions. One, am I correct in that assumption? And then, two, why would this not have been included in the original estimate? So that, you know, when the town faces a project that, you know, having it come back with additional revenue, I think kind of hits a sour note. So, go ahead, whoever.
Absolutely, and we do have a couple of those instances. And we're very sensitive to be coming back and asking for more money on a previous project, which we'll talk about shortly. Actually, this is not that instance. So, the highway had a priority project in this area with these streets. You know, I would call it the Mudville area, the streets have been listed in the warrant. And so, that project was essentially put on hold because the water main project was going to be done. The water main project has now been completed and included in that authorization is remaining funds for roadway improvements. So, the original project from highway, which is going to be drainage, sidewalks, roadway, is now ready to go, that the water mains have been put in. There is still some funding from the water main articles related to roadways. There's, there's an assumption of Chapter 90 funding and some, some capital funding within the DPW. And then, the sort of delta, the remaining need, we're now estimating at about $418,000. And that will get that project fully complete, use the rest of the money from the water main project that had been previously approved and the water main being done, and then close out that area and it should look very nice and be complete when it comes to all the drainage sidewalk and roadway needed.
That's great. So, we're going to actually have fully functional sidewalks down on Spring Street, which I don't think has had fully functional sidewalks since the kids stopped going to Andrew's school and maybe not even then.
I think Bobby Blair found a sidewalk marker right near the old Andrew's school that might have been placed by the WPA back in the 30s, I think, when the sidewalks were probably originally put in down there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not surprised. Leave it to Bobby. Okay, so the next one is actually sidewalk prioritization plan. And I have to say with a bit of sarcasm, I never thought I'd see the two words sidewalks and prioritization in the same sentence in Holliston. This happens to be one of my very big peeves about this town forever and ever. We say that we're going to have kids walk to school within two miles, if they live within two miles, and yet some of the sidewalks are impassable. But at any rate, I just think it's great now explained to me. Does this basically tell us which sidewalks are in what condition and what should be treated next or addressed next? I'm assuming it's kind of like the highway prioritization plan. I mean, you, there is always a, there's a methodology for determining which roads need to be taken care of. Is this the equivalent for sidewalks?
I think it would be. First of all, we're entering the form of the warrant. We're going to talk about several articles, Mary, this being the first, that address infrastructure. The select board of the last several years has placed a strong, high priority in the need to look at our infrastructure as a long neglected form that needs study and eventually planning investment. The first article that you just talked about deals with sidewalks. This particular item- This particular item, item would develop a prioritization plan that would allow the town to strategize ways to improve sidewalks that are existing and to potentially add sidewalks to increase our network connectivity. The board over the years has talked a lot about the fact that some of the sidewalk infrastructures are anecdotal. They don't seem to have a low or a purpose to connect to schools, rail trails, the center of town and whatnot. And furthermore, when the town engages in its annual water main replacement process, there's really little or no connectivity between those large public works projects and sidewalk improvements. This plan, this study rather, would give us the, the blueprint, if you would, to analyze where those sidewalk improvements and additions can be made. It's important to note that the biggest, I think one of the biggest issues associated with this article is that once we have this plan, we can then market it to available grant sources. The board, our board over the years has made a point of saving, saying that we're invested in safe routes to schools. You just mentioned that. We are invested in shared streets and spaces and complete streets. These are state programs that encourage local communities to develop plans to improve the pedestrian experience. This plan, once it's drafted, will allow us to market it to state grant programs to offset the cost of any sidewalk improvements. So I agree with you completely. It's a long, long overdue need in our town. I think the rail trail has proven that Holliston is a pedestrian driven community. It's a wildly successful environment. The sidewalks ought to be places in areas where people can use safe routes to those core areas of our town to enrich our, our quality of life. So our board enthusiastically supports this as well as several of the other articles that are about to follow.
I can speak as a former administrator for grant programs in the state. If you don't have a plan, they're not even going to look at you. There's no point in applying. So it is essential that we have this kind of information available to us. Now, by the same token, there are plenty of plans that end up sitting on the shelf. So it behooves us not to allow the, this one to, you know, fall into that dead C, dead C zone. But I have faith that with the, with the folks that are in place and the facilities person and so forth, and with the finance committee with a capital plan, I think that, I think we have a chance here of getting some of this infrastructure done. I have one question for you about the sidewalks plan. And that is in places like Concord Street, where some, one stretch of it is part of the state's owns and operates it and the rest of it is ours. Does the priority, forget that word, does the plan take into account that we have no control or limited control over the state piece? Or does it factor it in to show that, okay, we may not have control, but indeed it's on the list and it's like number two on the list. So state of Massachusetts, we need your help. You get what I'm saying?
I do. It's actually a great question. In a few minutes, we'll be talking about a traffic engineer study that's probably the, the centerpiece of the warrant. And that deals with traffic issues in neighborhoods that have been well discussed over the last several months. What folks probably have heard from us during those events were that we had Mastod out into Holliston on two occasions for walkthroughs for the purposes of identifying and putting eyes on these, these areas where commercial vehicles have been an issue. What they probably don't also understand is the purpose of those discussions were to reengage Mastod and bring them back to our community so that they can see their infrastructure, their state roads and the, the declining condition of those state roads and the need for us to reengage each other to plan for improved roadway designs and use. We did talk about Concord Street. We met right up near the Ashland line and we talked about the fact that the state roads and the town roads have a tendency to overlap in some areas. Mastod regularly works with communities to achieve improvements as long as there is a plan in place to accomplish that. They are active, very active with Ashland right now. They spoke extensively about some of the rather large state funded projects that they're putting in place there that also involve Ashland per, town owned property to the benefit of their residents. So our long term plan, and frankly, Mary, I think you know this, when I say long term, this is probably a 10 year plan. We're laying the groundwork today for roadway sidewalk improvements on state roads where they meet town roads for that infrastructure to be seamless and upgraded. There's a, there's a considerable need. We were on areas on Route 16, Washington Street up near the Hoppingbrook area and the roadway itself is, is heavily, heavily traveled. It, it became known to me, I didn't know this, but others did, that there was a sidewalk there at one point. It's now in severe level of decay. Those are the kinds of projects that Mastod acknowledged are long overdue. So we are now fully engaged with them. We have a very active dialogue. We, we have our state representative who joined us on that walkthrough and she knows that with her help, we'll be able to secure some much needed state route infrastructure improvements. But we need our plan also to be ready to work with them. We will be.
Oh, that's all, that's all very encouraging. I can remember there was a guy, Montenegro, I think was his last name, that we used to be the highway person over in Ashland, who was always aggressive about getting money. But I think in the last 10 or 15 years, they have certainly kept pace with that and have like the Pond Street and everything else that they've been talking about. They've got a lot of plans over there. So yeah, it can be done and it's time for us. Okay, so let's take these, you've got a couple of water ones right together. Number nine is the modernization plan and number 10 is the replacement plan. I'm going to hold number 11 just aside for the moment. That would be the, the treatment plant, even though it's water. But so let's talk about the modernization plan and then the water main replacement itself. How are we doing on that anyway? I gather the point is let's do a little bit more, a little bit faster. Let's go.
Sure, so there's a couple of things within the modernization plan that we're trying to accomplish and sort of broken into, I would say, two main pieces. One is water supply planning as well as source planning. So that's looking ahead to sort of say, you know, so long as we're, we're improving our system and making sure that, that our infrastructure is fixed, we also need to be thinking about where we're going to be getting water from in the future. So that is included in here. But, but included in that is, is updating a, a 10 year old plan on the actual sort of asset management plan, so to speak, on the pipes. Again, strategizing priorities of, of what should be done. As you said, article 10 is a project to replace water main on Winter Street. That is our current priority, getting that accomplished as quickly as possible. The water modernization plan, in addition to looking at future source of water, would also be making sure that our asset management plan is up to date and that our strategy for replacing these water mains is sound and that we can have it in our capital plan as aggressively as, as is feasible.
Okay, so I know I read occasionally that there's been a break on one street or another. When you say that you have Winter Street now as a priority, is that because of the breaks or because of some other information that you have?
We do have some, some break data that the board requested when we were looking at these articles earlier. Winter Street is a concern when it comes to breaks, but we have breaks throughout the system. So one of the things, and specifically why a modernization plan is necessary, is that we have been a little bit reactive when it comes to obviously addressing areas that are essentially the squeaky wheel where we have breaks. Winter Street was designed, the, the design went through town meeting previously, the design is all done and ready to go. That's why that project is here. What this plan will do is update our asset management plan to a sense to say, here are all the, the infrastructure improvements you've made over the last 10 years, not because it was, those were your priorities 10 years ago, but because you ended up having to do them as, as the squeaky wheel got the grease. And so having an update there, giving us a, a future plan of where we'd like to, to begin to address. Winter Street has been the priority as it was previously designed based on, you know, it becoming more and more of an issue over the years.
Does it get sidewalks?
Winter Street sidewalks was part of the conversation that we had. And one of the things that, that we discussed is the need, if we had had this sidewalk prioritization plan previously, we would have potentially had that data. The Winter Street Water Main Replacement Project was designed before the town entered into complete streets and before we had a sidewalk prioritization plan. So it is not in the plan. The conversation that I have with the board, the way that I view Winter Street, and I did drive up it, we had quite a bit of conversation on this one, is that doing the water mains and, and doing the, the drive, excuse me, the, the roadway, if we were to pursue sidewalks on Winter Street in the future, we would most likely not be taking any roadway because it is so narrow. We would need to be going into sort of an easement territory, right? And then the, the complication with, with Winter Street that the board has asked me to begin to look at is going to be a few complications. One is the scenic road component. So, you know, looking at anytime there are stone walls or trees, you know, we have to go through a specific process with that. And then, you know, looking at any place where we may need some land to make sure that we would have enough space. So we're looking at that separately. But I think, you know, as, as Mr. Cronin mentioned with the sidewalk prioritization plan, that is really going to couple with our water modernization plan so that in the future, we can be looking at all of these programs holistically and always be thinking of whether or not sidewalks should be implemented when we're looking at these programs.
Wow, I, I'm just in my head, I'm wrestling with the idea of cutting down trees for sidewalks. It's like taking my two passions and putting them side by side and saying, which one do you want? Oh, boy, well.
It's a complicated street, but I think we can, we can begin to look at it, put together all of the, the moving components of it and see if it's feasible.
Yeah. All right, well, that was a big one. So let's talk about the treatment plant. This, I, I'm going to vent a little bit of frustration, just it seems like we've been talking about this treatment plant for, for several years and I don't want to put a number to it. I don't remember when it started, but I do know even on the Board of Assessors that we have, you know, a resident anyway, who has complained about it and, and has tried to just, please just do something, do something. So every once in a while it pops up. I'm guessing we ran, the, the, I'm not just guessing, but from reading this, the prices, it's been so many years that we've had some inflation. So in fact, the cost to do whatever we were originally going to do has gone up. But in addition, the state has changed some of the rules or maybe even provided us extra rules. I don't know. So exactly what is the state of this and how sure can we be that we're going to get this thing done and when is that?
Well, I'll start, Mary, and Travis can fill in some blanks. The, the project is on schedule. We are expected to go out to bid in early 2021 and hopefully begin construction sometime in 2021 and complete the project by the summer of 2022. Those timelines haven't changed since this past spring. The project is 95% complete design, which tells us that we have now reached the endpoint with knowing what it is we're going to build. The engineer approached us about a month ago and indicated that there were additional costs that he saw looming that were not envisioned when the 2018 authorization was provided. You've just mentioned what they are, but they do add up to a potential cost that could push the total project cost above the authorized amount from 2018. So what this $850,000 does is it gives us the flex space to allow the project to be bid and awarded. Will it reach $8.8 million? We don't know. The cost of public projects these days seems to be going up, interestingly enough. Not down, given some of the other market tendencies we've, we've observed. So in this case, we're, we're basically protecting ourselves against not having enough money to fund the project once it's bid. I feel comfortable at this point that the costs, which are identified as overages, were not and could not have been envisioned in 2018. These were not part of the contingency, but I think you correctly pointed out, rather they were subsequent demands put on our project design that could not have been otherwise predicted. And they include an, a Mast DEP mandated change to the scope of the project, the addition of a second backwash supply pump, in addition of an area to reduce chemical usage. Those things in addition to cost construction escalation that are above what was projected in 2018 were related to the COVID pandemic. So these costs were really beyond anybody's control and they represent an opportunity for us to finally put this thing out to bid and stay on track for opening this plant in 2022.
I want to just make sure that I'm not remembering this wrong. Originally, it wasn't scheduled for '22, was it?
That's correct.
Okay, it was originally scheduled for like '21?
Originally scheduled, correct, for, I think it was November of '21. We, we recognized the, the project planning was reaching beyond that in the spring. When we, when we told the town that the design, construction process was leading us down that road of having an opening in 2022.
All right, so Article 12, stormwater management. Stormwater for the, you know, people who again, don't get engaged with all the jargon, just is all the stuff that flows off of our roofs and streets and driveways and everything else and then ends up down the drain and into the water and into the drains and then eventually back into the ground. So I know that the state and we adopted all kinds of new laws and regulations and so forth. So specifically, what are we doing with this little piece?
So this is the third year of design engineering as it relates to the MS4 permit that we received, which is an EPA DEP permit that all cities and towns are now having to go through. We're still in the planning stages of it. So there, at, at some point, there is going to be a reckoning for cities and towns in Massachusetts where, you know, we, we design all of these plans for stormwater and then DEP can potentially come in and say, all right, here are the projects that you, we, you must do. We're not at that point yet with it. And we also feel, you know, based on where we are with stormwater when it comes to culverts and those types of things, that there may not be, you know, any sort of low hanging fruit for DEP at the moment to come in with. But that's sort of looking ahead and putting that on everybody's radar. It's something that I've seen in other cities and towns and I've been involved in in the past that, that I'd like us to, to begin to think about in the future. What this is, is, is maintaining where we are in the reporting point. We have a few deliverables within this to DEP to keep us compliant with the MS4 permit. And then included in this cost, this $92,300 is also going to be the beginning of sort of public outreach to begin to explain to residents what it is that this, that town needs to be looking at with stormwater in the future. And that's a, I think that's going to be an important component moving forward that hopefully I'll be able to work with the, the town planner and, and the DPW director to begin that. We also have the Sustainability Director who has been looking at stormwater issues on a more regional level, the Charles River watershed groups. And so the MS4, this, this particular article is, is keeping us in compliance as a town with the MS4 permit. And then the, the stormwater discussion, I think in general, is, is one that we're going to begin to be having over the next few years.
Okay, so, and at the risk, let's see, we've got just a few more things. I don't want to drag this on, but places like the, whatever it's called, it used to be Casella, is it Cobanta? Those kinds of situations where there's a potential for runoff that goes, you know, perhaps directly into a, a low area, Lowland Street. Is, if, is that the kind of location that might, not that it is, but might bump up a situation, I mean, for us that we, in the reporting, that somebody at DEP might look at and say, ah, that could be problematic? Or is it not that kind of thing? Am I wrong? It's a development, whatever. I'm just trying to find, what's an example of something that, that, that would, would worry DEP?
So those, those things are certainly on DEP's radar. It's, in terms of there's a liability to the town, it's not necessarily our issue, right? That DEP can go directly to those businesses, look at their operations and look at their runoff, right? So we are looking more at, you know, town owned roadways and those types of things that lead to stormwater runoff and, and our, our impact as a town. So as included in this article, and, and as, you know, as included in the quote that, that has led to this, we're going to develop regulatory mechanism assistance, operations maintenance plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, preparation, public education assistance, and the integrated GIS data collection. And so a, a number of those things are just beginning to plan what the town can do itself, right? So when it comes to the businesses that you mentioned, the DEP can and will go directly to those businesses to, to sort of make sure that there's mitigation of some kind for stormwater runoff. We're looking more at our own impact here.
Okay, good. That's good for clarification. Thank you very much. Okay, so Nine Green Street, for those who don't know, that's the white building that is behind, it's on Green Street, obviously right at the corner, behind the brick building that is a former golf station. What are we doing with that? We bought it, didn't we?
We own it. We're, we're looking to secure $54,900 to design, engineer and We own it. Uh, we're we're looking to secure fifty four thousand nine hundred dollars to design, engineer and plan. Um, a demolition plan for the building. Uh, the building has been uh reviewed and examined by our our building inspector, our fire chief and our facility manager. It is secured. Uh, there is no trespassing sign posted. Um, the building has some um structural issues, including a failed roof failure point. Um, it needs to come down. Um, so this 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 engineering and planning costs will cover that plan as well as a surface water design plan and a lot design plan. What we want out of this uh funding opportunity is the is the chance to see what are our options for this property? What does it present? We do know from some past uh groundwater testing that there is contamination in the ground from um. Uh, manufacturing processes that occurred some time ago. Uh, and it kind of limits what can uh be, what the site can be used for. So this particular um article will give us uh the information that we need to make reasonable decisions going forward. Once the building is raised on its highest and best use.
Okay, um, I've got no questions on that one. We'll see how that goes. Signs and equipment, public safety.
Sure. So the town has a traffic advisory committee um that was created not long before I got here. Um, and it is, it is sort of the the mechanism that most towns use to address traffic uh complaints, traffic needs. Uh, and it is putting together a number of different officials onto one group um to tackle some of our more uh intricate issues. So the chair is the police chief, it also includes the fire chief, the DPW director. Um, a member from the select board and then a number of uh representatives of the public. Uh, they have been beginning their hearings and they've heard quite a few so far, although they did have to stop because at some point they need to be able to address some of these concerns. A number of the concerns had to do with need for signage. This is not, uh, one concern I heard was that. Uh, there were, you know, they're looking to put signs everywhere. That's that's certainly not this. But at the same point, to be able to answer a a question that comes in front of the traffic advisory committee or TAC. Um, that says, you know, essentially, we have cars coming down our street and it's a dead end street. Can we have a dead end sign, please? Um, for TAC to be able to essentially respond to that complaint. Uh, it's also been pointed out that we do have a signed budget within DPW that's a thousand dollars. Think of that more as a main a maintenance budget when it comes to worn and broken signs. What this is is sort of a new service level for TAC to be able to respond to requests. So that's the the smaller component within this article. The other component within the article is actual um data collection. Um, uh, equipment, right? So we have these signs up that that deliver messages on the road, but we also, they now have signs that can do that. But they can also do traffic counts, speed counts, those types of things that give us data for our public safety officials to be making uh proper decisions. So, for example, as as the chair mentioned, the work that we're doing with MAS DOT. When it comes to potentially pursuing a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Woodland Street or any future street. What we're going to want to be prepared to do when that goes into effect. Um, is going to is going to be to make sure that we're capturing where that traffic flow is going. That some of the equipment that that TAC has requested is going to allow them to um make sure that we're tracking the impacts that we're having when we make those decisions. To allow us to make the best possible decisions for the town. Um, and those signs are in here, and that was a request from TAC, which the select board um approved and put on the warrant. Uh, and has been reviewed by um in select board, finance committees, capital subcommittee. Um, and I think was a a very reasonable and and well thought out request.
Okay, that's interesting. That is very interesting. So we'd actually collect data. I like that. All right, so then traffic and sound engineering studies. Um, I know that some of this has got to relate to some very old problems. In fact, you've mentioned, you know, commercial traffic on Lowland or Woodland, and I don't know if anybody's mentioned South Street today, but I certainly will. I know you've been thinking about it and talking about it and talking to um DOT and so forth and so forth. But um, what is it that we, first of all, I don't know if you guys, well, certainly not you, Travis, but John, do you remember having a town engineer here in your lifetime?
No.
Ah, well, I do. No, there was one down at the highway department. So, um, and then we had a building inspector that also happened to be a civil engineer. So, you know, for some years, we've actually had in-house engineering. And from my experience there, it made life so much easier. It just, and you always knew you had information that was designed with the intention to take care of the town, not uh whatever else. You know, it wasn't a for-profit business. This was, you know, part of the team. I wish we had that, but in lieu of that, um, what is this?
This is the centerpiece article, in my opinion, for the warrant. Um, over the last six months, our board has uh tackled uh longstanding traffic issues in various neighborhoods in Holliston. For starting with the Lowland Industrial Park neighborhoods. We conducted a Zoom meeting this summer that included over a hundred and thirty people. We heard dozens more. Who are concerned about the impact of commercial vehicles in their neighborhoods and the access roads leading in and out of Lowland Industrial Park. Almost immediately after that meeting, we heard uh from the South Street residents who were un- enduring similar impacts. Um, from trucks traveling through South Street uh to and from Medway, which connects uh by way of Clark Road. Uh, we were immediately confronted with these, as you pointed out, longstanding issues. Um, as we began to engage MasDOT and understand what the process entailed. We recognized that we've had a couple of what's called paper exclusionary roads or roads that it had signs put up by prior boards to, you know, impede uh commercial traffic. Uh, those are not enforceable. So, um, we also discovered, Travis found out that we actually had a couple of other roads, including Woodland. That were already confirmed uh exclusion roads uh through the MasDOT process. We need traffic engineering or traffic count studies that are stamped by an eligible um certified engineer. To make the case for any roadway to be considered an exclusion. Those applications are then sent to MasDOT, who will accept those roads upon, you know, certified counts. Um, this article gives us the tool to hire this vendor, this contractor, to give us the data on the roadways that are most affected by commercial vehicle uh traffic. We talked last night a little bit about the timing because residents and and I completely sympathize with them. They they understand what we're doing, but their impatience is sort of bred from years of inaction, years of uh inertia, if you will. Nothing's happened and they're growing impatient because they see what we're doing, but they don't see the light at the end of the tunnel. Last night, we talked broadly about some expected time frames and a town meeting, I expect this will probably gather some more interest. Once we secure this contractor, hopefully by the end of calendar year twenty, we will engage their services for the respective roads. I don't know if you have it handy, but the scope of this work is limited to the areas that we just talked about. Uh, and the surrounding community, community roadways. The engineer's report could conceivably be given to us sometime this early spring of twenty twenty one. We'll use the data in our applications to MasDOT, who told us that they would reasonably turn around most applications within one to two months. So my hope is that by the end of fiscal year twenty one, that would be next June. We could be looking at approved commercial vehicle excluded roadways that finally um uh redirect truck traffic. Um, onto state numbered roads um and leave these streets and side streets, which were never built for those um vehicles. Um, to their to their original design, which was personal vehicle traffic. So ultimately, this is a small amount of money for a large gain. Uh, and a huge improvement for uh quality of life for these individuals who've really endured too much. Uh, we'll be putting out the word up to December fifth for the residents who've been working with us to show up at town meeting uh to make their voices heard on this article.
Um, it this is a longstanding issue and as a former resident of of South Street, and that was more than twenty years ago. Uh, it's it it is not new. But right now, there is something else that we haven't talked about, and that is the the proposed development at five fifty five um Hopping Brook Road. And Holliston, we all say that we need to have business, we want to have business, and we don't want to be bad neighbors. And I I fully subscribe to that. I think that's essential. But by the same token, I don't think it's fair to take it out on one particular street and South Street and Lowland as well, but South Street for the moment. Um, in looking at all of this, I want, I I I'm going to make, I'm sort of articulating here. If the point is not to hurt business, but rather to do what frankly, the law already requires, which is that those trucks belong on state routes. That is really what the state and the feds intend. Um, and so they don't belong on places like South Street or Locust Street or High Street or whatever. So, again, this is just another old, old process, project that, you know, is finally uh getting looked at. I personally certainly hope that this this passes. I do have one question for you, and that is I I participated or listened to the Lowland meeting with a hundred and thirty people. I did not see or hear from a whole lot of the businesses from Lowland Street. And I want to know if you have gotten contacted by them and if they have their concerns because they need to be listened to too. I mean, this is, this isn't, uh, we can't exclude them. So what's the status with the businesses that are on Lowland Street?
Yeah, and a great question. The uh the status is, when we originally started uh the Lowland Industrial Park dialogue. Letters were sent to all business owners as well as the butters about this um meeting. I personally spoke to um a couple of business owners about the impact of uh truck traffic um on their businesses. And I know you met and had several conversations with additional um vendors, excuse me, um, business owners. I think for a lot of practical reasons, they chose not to be publicly facing with their thoughts, their concerns. Um, but we have heard directly from a handful of them. Um, I think they understand what's at stake. Um, they just want to make sure that the process is open. And that there are no uh, there are no hidden bombs here, that they that everybody understands what's ahead. That was, that was the basic message that I was conveyed um and that I understand completely. I I agree with you, Mary. There has to be a very natural balance between uh business interests and a community's quality of life. Um, it certainly seems to me in both the South Street instance and in the abutting streets up at Lowland, that that balance has been out of whack for quite a long time. And so our board, I think, is looking to achieve the balance again that permits um quiet enjoyment of those streets. Uh, but at the same time, allows businesses to thrive and use the routes that were designed originally for their use.
I would just, there's even the the fact that the road should be constructed differently if you know that you're going to be allowing car traffic versus truck traffic. I mean, that's just some fundamentals there. But Travis, did you want to say something?
Well, we, I'm sorry, when we met with MasDOT um last month um on South Street and we were talking about that that particular cut through. The town manager from Medway met us at the town line. And uh he made a remark that kind of resonates with me. He was very boisterous and emphatically embraced the idea of the of a an exclusion all the way out to Route one oh nine. He he embraced the idea of an alternative route for commercial vehicles to travel um eastbound on one oh nine and then obviously into Medway. He had no problems with that. But to your point, he said, uh, he said to MasDOT, these roads weren't built for trucks. They were built for milk trucks back in the forties and fifties. That's it. And he he was spot on. The the infrastructure does not support these heavy vehicles, um, and we recognize that. So uh, we're not blind also to the unintended consequence that when any of these exclusions go into place, we're going to see more heavy trucks using the state numbered routes that we talked earlier about that are going to need improvements. Um, Holliston has to have a long-term vision. We can't simply put vehicles on those roads and call it a day. We need to follow through with MasDOT to make sure that the roadways are designed and built for a long-term purpose and use, and we intend to do that.
Also, can we, can we also start enforcing laws regarding them? That would be another piece, but I, you know, okay, Travis, you talk.
I was just going to say to to the business piece, you know, one one thing I've been trying to hammer home to everybody too, because I'd like to set expectations is that we think the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion in some areas is going to be, you know, going to improve quality of life in those areas. But people do need to understand, and especially from a business component, that if business is being conducted on any of these roadways, there are always exceptions to the exclusion, right? So a truck can continue to go to and on Woodland Street, for example, our own building has heavy commercial vehicles go to it, which is the school. Um, and so those those are so, you know, address some of the concerns of the businesses, which is that they are obviously going to be allowed to continue to do business. What we're trying to do is not have our sort of side streets that are, were not designed for this to be cut throughs for trucks, right? That's the intent and that's sort of what we're going to focus on. I think specific to your question on five five five, you know, I I think South Street, regardless of any further development of Hopping Brook, is a priority. You know, even if there were no further development, it's still a priority because of the impacts that they've already had. Certainly, we are sort of watching what what develops there uh and that impacts it. But I think either way, we're we're interested in South Street, I would say. Do you just want to touch on the public safety component?
Yeah, Mary, you glanced over it, but um before I get to the traffic enforcement, this article also um would fund a component to reviews, review noise ordinance assessments. Um, in addition to traffic, we regularly get complaints from residents complaining about noise associated with um heavy motor vehicles. And the engineer will be doing a noise ordinance assessment as well. With regard to enforcement, we've had extensive conversations with Holliston PD. Uh, earlier this summer, Chiefs Don engaged with the State Police Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Unit in an exercise that was very productive. And they isolated several um uh commercial vehicles. And um, I don't really know if they were given summonses or any uh complaints or tickets, but it was a very active day. We pulled over quite a few vehicles. We made it clear to the Hollison um chief, police chief, that down the road is his organization has to become trained and equipped. Um, to handle better um commercial vehicle uh enforcement. He understands that. He has already reached out to similar communities of our size that are undergoing the changes of um commercial and personal vehicle um. Uh, use to figure out strategies uh for um training and equipment needs that we're likely going to encounter over the next couple of years. He's very active. He's embracing the opportunity. But I, again, I couldn't agree with you more. Enforcement is the backend of all this work. If we do everything and then go home, uh we will solve nothing. We need to enforce the actions.
All right, well, we're going to wrap it up with the last one is just um accepting streets and there were three of them, Deer Run, Hopping Brook Road and Indian Ridge Road South. So that's anything that we need to know, or is that it?
No, this actually was on the July warrant. We're essentially resetting the hundred twenty day um ability to take if that's the uh going to be the end result here. But Indian Ridge Road South is one that we're we're getting a lot of feedback from residents on, be able to put up signs and address some of the concerns. We do need to have that road accepted uh and working through the legal process, putting this back on the warrant is going to be the quickest way to get that handled.
All right. Okay, guys, there's a lot here and we've taken more time than I normally do. But for a short warrant, I mean, it's not like this is one of the thirty five uh top choices, but anyway. All right, guys, thanks very, very much. I appreciate your time and uh we'll see you. Do you have something else, John?
I I just wanted, because it's relevant, Mary, I know we're short on time, but last night our our board discussed the quorum issue. We've received a lot of citizen feedback on it. We'll pick it up on Monday. There are some pros and cons uh relative to uh lowering the quorum that's allowed under the special act. Uh, we'll fall through on that next week. So I just let folks know that it's still on the table.
I would just point out that there was some concern online that the conversation was about reducing the quorum to as low as ten. That is the way that the law is written. That is not what the select board is entertaining. Last night, they discussed anywhere between fifty and a hundred, hundred being the status quo.
Okay, yeah, you gotta love social media sometimes.
Gee.
All right.
Right.
Thank you, and to the public, please pay attention to what's going on. Um, this warrant is available on the town website. And there's going to be lots of conversation beforehand, but certainly assuming that it goes forward December fifth, one o'clock, it's a Saturday afternoon. It's a little different than doing the holiday stroll, but at any rate, um, please don't forget and please participate. Until then, I will see you. This is Mary Greendale, next time.